The best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here. I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard.
We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing, it's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence. I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of October 13th. City Council will meet for a joint session Tuesday night with LSR 7 at 6:00 PM at the Green Street Market. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Celebrate the 150th anniversary of the Lee Summit Fire Department at a fun-filled open house on October 18th from 9:00 AM to noon at Fire Station Number 7, located at 2150 Southwest Sheer Road. Bring the whole family to tour the fire station and walk through an inflatable house to learn about fire safety. Don't miss this opportunity to honor their legacy and join the celebration. The city is hiring a planner or senior planner to join Development Services. This role reviews development proposals, assists with permits, and provides zoning and planning guidance. It also supports long-range efforts like the Ignite Comprehensive Plan and housing initiatives. Apply today at lspeople.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of a street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys and get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google. So we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Officers en route, night work teams armed.
Waterway Car Wash is coming to the streets of West Prior. It'll provide an express or full-service car wash in a convenience store on location. Waterway Car Wash will open in fall 2025. Encho and Agave is coming to Summit Fair. The restaurant features Mexican food with a made-from-scratch menu in a casual setting. Encho and Agave will open in fall 2025. Henline's Boutique &amp; Home has arrived downtown. The boutique offers a curated collection of clothing, specialized accessories, and trendy home goods. Shop the latest styles today. Midwest Avionics and Summit Flight Academy are building a hangar at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport. The repair station and flight school's very own hangar will open for operation in fall 2025. The joint operations facility is being built next to police headquarters. The building will house Fire Department Administration and Training Teams, City Emergency Operations, the Traffic Operations Center, and a co-located Fire and Police Communications Center. Completion of the project is slated for spring 2026.
When I was about nine years old, my mother promised me that she would buy me a little black poodle for my birthday. The poodle was here in Lee Summit. We lived in Independence. I had never been to Lee Summit before. And the funniest thing when I got here, I just thought to myself, I want to live in Lee Summit someday. So in 1975, we moved here and we bought a little house in Briarcroft for $28,000. We started having children after that. We wanted to become part of this community.
Call regular session number 61 to order a roll call.
Mayor Rhodes, he kept seeing me show up at the council meetings and he said, "Why are you here?" And I said, "Well, I want to know more about what's going on with the city." I was asked to be on the tax review board.
To order the Lee Summit Planning Commission.
Then I applied to be on Planning Commission and I spent four years there. But I said, "If I dip my toe in the water with planning and I love it, I'm going to try for council."
Can I repeat after me?
Aye.
State your name.
Aye, Cinder Raider.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
2024.
On the 16th May of April 2024. Thank you, Mayor. So then going along with what Councilmember Carlisle said, we just get back into the room and we hammer it out and get... You know, we sit on the dais, right? And that's kind of one of the most intimidating things that you do is like being out there in front of people and being worried about, you know, saying the right thing or not saying the right thing. I want to make the right decision. I want to say things that will be impactful, that will be influential, that will help our city more. Most people know this on the dais. I am very impassioned about housing. It's partly because I've done real estate for 30 years, but it's not because I want to sell more houses. It's because we have a need, a tremendous need here in Lee Summit and really all over the country. There are a lot of people that want to come to Lee Summit. They want to live here, they want to buy homes here. I am excited to get more attainable homes, start bringing in families, providing senior housing, workforce housing, all those things that we need if we're going to continue to grow and become bigger and better. We're really in a good place for the future, but we need to continue bringing people in to be our future leaders. The young people that will be coming to live here, stay here, have a stakehold in the community, building businesses here. I built a business here. There's other people that want to come here and live and start. It's just important for people to always be involved in the city. It makes us a better city.
Please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear, dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together this evening in service to our community. We ask for your presence to guide our discussions and decisions. Grant us wisdom to see clearly, patience to listen well, and compassion to understand one another. May our work tonight strengthen the partnerships between our city and our schools, and may everything we do reflect care for the people and the future we share. Amen.
All right, well done. Thank you all. Again, welcome everyone. This is a night where we're going to do kind of a work session type of structure. And so we're going to start off with a call to order. So I'm calling to order the City of Lee's Summit Joint Session with LSR seven, Regular Session number 52. And with that, could I get a roll call for the City Council?
Councilmember Raider. Councilmember Pryor. Councilmember Hodges. Councilmember Shields. Councilmember Funk. Councilmember Level. Councilmember Carlisle. Mayor for Temloco.
Here.
Mayor Barrett.
Here. And are you prepared to, for Board President Myers? Okay. Board President Myers, she's going to do your roll call.
Ms. Ismer, could we have a roll call, please?
Board Member Johnson. Board Member Dawson. Board Member Dickens. Board Member Haley. Vice President Miller. Board Member Garrett. President Myers.
Excellent. Thank you all so much. With that, I would also need an approval of the agenda. Councilmember Shields, I got a motion. I got a motion from Councilmember Shields to approve the agenda. I have a second from Councilmember Carlisle to approve the agenda. Do I have any discussion? Can I get a council roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shields? Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor? Councilmember Raider? Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Mayor for Temloco?
Aye.
Mayor Barrett?
Aye. Okay. Would you like to approve the agenda?
Okay, so to the board, this is our regular monthly work session. So I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so we usually have a council roundtable at the beginning of the meeting. These are items of general interest, things going on in the community. And I welcome our school board members to also share if they have any good news or anything that they want the public to know about information wise. Yes, Councilmember Shields?
Downtown Main Street is going to be having the 2025 Haunted and Historic Spaces Tour this weekend. I believe they still have a few tickets left. They opened up a couple of additional tour times because of the popularity of the event. So great event. Hope folks will come out and support downtown.
Okay, very good. For the public and for Greens, for people that may watch this video at a later date, we are in Green Street, the farmer's market. So we have the ability in here to have all kinds of different meetings and different setups and such. So we're pretty excited to be here with the, with the school board. We, I will come, I will explain tonight's agenda a little bit more detail, but let me get through a couple of more items first that I call them business items. And the first would be the public comments. We have a couple of public comment sheets that have been turned in, and I believe we have Hallie Hall here to make public comment. We give three minutes to everyone, to anyone that would like to speak. It's supposed to be about things related to the city and operations and such. Yep, come right here to the middle. Welcome and thank you for coming to the meeting. Go ahead.
Hello and good evening, councilmembers.
Oh, screwed up a little bit and get right into that microphone for us. There we go.
Hello and good evening, councilmembers. I'm Hallie Hall, and today I came to talk to you about banning single-use plastic bags in Lee Summit shops, restaurants, and other public places. Studies like Los Angeles, Boston, New York, and Seattle all have taken action against single-use plastic bags. Over 200 cities have, even some states like Delaware and Oregon, have banned single-use plastic bags. I know Lee Summit should join the fight against single-use plastic bags. Single-use plastic bags are made by the trillions every year using fossil fuels. We need fossil fuels for more important things like heating homes, powering cars, and giving electricity to important buildings. Also, the chemicals from the single-use plastic bag end up in water supplies, rivers, lakes, and oceans. The chemicals can pollute the water, risking human and animal health. The chemicals can cause diseases like certain cancers, cardiovascular diseases. Lee Summit uses around 39 million single-use plastic bags a year, and the world uses around 5 trillion plastic bags a year. Most of these single-use plastic bags go to landfills, but it can take over 1,000 years for the bag to decompose completely. It would be better to get rid of all that plastic for Lee Summit's welfare and the future of our community. Did you know there is a floating piece of trash in the ocean the size of Texas? In 2015, 82% of the trash in the ocean was plastic. This is dangerous for animals and sea life. Every year, over a million seabirds die because of plastic pollution, and over 100,000 marine mammals die because of plastic pollution. That's not all plastic can do. It can give people respiratory diseases. During my summer vacation, I discovered Colorado Springs banned single-use plastic bags, which led me to research the environmental impact of plastic. Thank you for listening in free time. I hope you deeply consider my thoughts. Lee Summit needs to join the fight against single-use plastic bags. Also, I have my numbers for 39 million. The average American uses 365 single-use plastic bags per year. The population of Lee Summit in 2024 was 107,000 and 665. Those two numbers together is just a little over 39 million.
Wow, that was fantastic. Good information. I think you said Colorado Springs, you went there? Yeah. I went there this, just last month too, and I kept forgetting to take a bag to the store. But I did use the paper and they didn't, they didn't even give you the option of the, of the plastic bag. So, so that was very good information, and thank you for coming tonight and presenting. Next, we have Ms. Volenwider.
Teresa Volenwider, 52, 01, Northeast Maybrook Road. What I wrote on what my comment was going to be tonight was that planners, city planners, need to have some skin in the game. They need to, like surveyors and engineers, have professional licenses, something that you can yank from them if their behavior turns bad. I'm going to use the property next to me as an example, and I'm going to describe it as a fiasco. And I used AI to come up and look at that, and it's a fiasco is a complete and often humiliating failure, particularly when something planned goes wrong. All of you took a conforming property, zoned ag, and made it non-conforming and in violation of the UDO. You have made other people go from residential to ag for the exact reason. In this case, this property went from ag to residential, but in some cases, they've made people go from residential to ag. Part of those reasons have to do with sheds on the property. Well, at 5261 Northeast Maybrook Road, ag, you can have buildings. But when you switch it to residential large lot or residential, the number of sheds allowed on residential large lot is one. If you have a detached garage and less than five acres, the maximum size is 2,500 square feet. Next to me at 5261, we have a building that is 3,200 square feet. Plus, we have a storage shed. Plus, we have a pool house. Plus, we have a shade structure. So in that, I would think that if you have a database that provides that information to me, that you're using a software program, if you put that information into that program, it's going to kick something out that says, no need to rezone that property. You can build a house on it with, and meet set bags, backs with it being ag, which is what the truth was for this property. It didn't need to be rezoned. You all allowed for a reconsideration, which should have never happened. And now look what we got.
All right, thank you. Okay, that takes us through the public comments this evening. The City Council has one item that we need to vote on tonight. This is an ordinance. I'm going to have Councilmember Shields read, but this is a second reading for adoption. And it has to do with issuing general obligation bonds. Councilmember Shields, would you please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of Bill number 25-191, an ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed $50 million principal amount of general obligation bond series 2025A of the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions by the city.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Shields to adopt Bill number 25-191. I have a second by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that bill's adopted unanimously. And that's going to take us to Agenda Item 5A on your agendas. We're going to go into the presentation portion of the evening. Again, we do a work session type of layout tonight. We did this last year. Dr. Buck came up with this, and I really was like, is this going to work? And it was, it went really well. So I was really impressed with it. So we're doing it again. So it's, it's more interactive. The first presentation is going to, going to really set the tone, though. But the reason that we come together like this as a school board and as the City Council is just to share our organizational values and strengthen our relationship between the council and the board, peer to peer. I consider the board president my peer and council members and board members peers. And then Dr. Buck is a peer with Mark Dunning, the city manager. And so we definitely, you know, share the same citizens, much of the same citizens, not all. Our boundaries are a little bit different. But that means we share the same brand, and we, and we share the, so many responsibilities to the very same citizens in our community. We are very proud of how far we've come, not just, you know, with our relationship, but just all the progress that the school districts had, and the city's also been growing as well. You've had tremendous growth, and we have too, and handling growth is always a challenge. And we're very, though, we're very proud of the school district and the school board. So I do want to thank you all for being here tonight and doing this joint meeting. This is the seventh year we've done this in a row. So I think it means a lot. And you'll see from the crowd when I explain how we're going to rotate and such, that the, that the public can, can be right there in the, in the, in the, close to the conversations and hear what's going on. So with that, Board President Myers, I'd just kind of hand over to you to add on any thoughts you have.
Well, first of all, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank the City Council for hosting us here this evening in this beautiful new building. You should be very, very proud of what has been constructed down here in downtown Lee Summit. It's, it's beautiful, and it adds, it's just added value to the entire community. So attaboy for, for getting that done. It's, it's wonderful. I also would like to reiterate the partnership between the city and the school district is really, really important. And we appreciate your willingness to work with us as we're trying to deal with some growth issues right now ourselves. And we look forward to the dialogue this evening. So thank you for having us.
All right, thank you. So we're going to end up having different tables that we're going to go to in just a bit. But first, we have a presentation. It's a group presentation. It's school safety through collaboration efforts or collaborative efforts. And so we have the Lee Summit Police Department and the LSR seven staff here to do a presentation. So. Yep, we need the mic back.
All right, board and council, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity in this beautiful facility. And a little bit later on, when you go around the room, you get a chance to get a, kind of get a chance to hear about some of the bond projects that we have teed up, the wonderful facilities as well. And I just want to reiterate, you know, we're going to talk about the collaboration and partnership that we share around the topic of safety and security. But also, we do collaborate on a lot of other things with the park department, with development, with land purchases, with school sites, all those types of things. There's a lot of collaboration that takes place between the school district and the city, and it's a very important relationship that we share and enjoy. So.
Oh, make sure you guys introduce yourselves as you come up. You're Dr. Shelton.
I am Dr. Shelton. That's what we're getting to right now. I am Steve Shelton, Associate Superintendent of Operations for the school district, and I'm going to turn it over here to my friends.
Stephen Dukes, Captain with Lee Summit Police Department.
Ben Hicks, Assistant Chief Lee Summit Fire.
Ryan Hall, Manager of Safety and Environmental Risk.
And this isn't the only, these, these aren't the only members of this team. We have a large team of individuals that come together, at least on a, for sure, on a monthly basis, to have a very focused conversation on this topic. But really, on the day to day, there are a number of people that are involved in this conversation, and we'll talk a little bit, a bit more about that here in just a little bit. One of the things we do each and every month is have a collaborative meeting. If you, I know the folks out here can see, but board and council, if you want to turn around, you can see the, see the display. Our conversations focus on many details, but in large part, it's in one of these five areas or collective areas together. So prevention and mitigation, preparation, response, recovery, communication. All of our conversations deal with one of those five areas or collectively those areas together. And so when we think about prevention and mitigation, all that we do, if you, if you know anything about emergency operations planning, that's one of the very first steps, prevention and mitigation. Then you prepare. If you can't prevent and mitigate, you prepare, you train, you get ready, then respond. In the event that something happens, you're ready to respond, and you do respond. And then recovery, you think about those things. Once the event is over, how do you get back to normal? But what's woven into all of it is communication, and we work on communication each and every day of our relationship. All right, who else is in this meeting at this time? I mentioned myself. So on the Lee Summit side, we have myself, we have the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, the Executive Director of Communication, our Manager of Safety and Environmental Risk, and then any special guest that we may decide to bring. From the first responders' side of it, we have Lee Summit Police Department, we have the Captain of Youth, Captain of Youth and Student School Services Unit, the YSSU Sergeant, Public Information Officer from the Fire Department, we have Deputy Chief of Operations, the Assistant Chief of Emergency Management. And then not only do we bring, from a school district standpoint, because we have school districts and other jurisdictions, and we have many jurisdictions that we don't even have schools, but we partner also with the Southern Jackson County Fire Protection Department, and then other police departments like Greenwood, Lake Ladawana, Lake Winnebago, and then also Blue Springs, which isn't, which is on this list. A sample agenda. So this is from September of 2024. And so the topics that day that we discussed was our crisis communication workshop. We hosted a workshop on crisis communication. How do we do this? And how do we do this well? Also, safety priority assessment tools are really what we call, what we call a Pratt, a safety Pratt that we had last year, that that school year. Coincidentally, that year, we had an event, the first, an incident, the first day of school at Lee Summit Elementary right across the street, and we do a debrief. We do an after-action review. What happened? What went well? What could we have done better? Lee Summit High School football game communication, as you can imagine, when you have 5,000 people in a very confined area, managing those youth and those adults can be, be a task. And so we talk about how do we communicate in those environments? The start-of-school procedures, you know, as we start at the school year, we start having these discussions. What does drop-off and pickup look like? What do buses look like? How do we keep our walkers safe when they're going to and from school? Just this year, we had the flashing light here. Our, our traffic wasn't, you know, the area traffic wasn't used to it. We had communications with fire and police. How can we do that better? And so we figured out a way for one of our staff to escort students across, across the street. So those partnerships and those communications that take place. Emerging issues, activity seasons launch. So as we think about the football season and cross-country and volleyball and all those seasons starting up, we have fire and police at, at many of those events and coordinating those efforts. Artificial intelligence applications, another topic as new, tools come, become available. How can we use those to our advantage? Wearable devices. So in our school district, in many school districts, staff wear wearable devices. We're piloting a tool at two of our buildings right now. The Georgia shooting, right after this meeting, happened to be right after the shooting that happened at a Georgia high school. We were starting to debrief on that. There are the intel and, and feedback that was coming out of that incident. What can we learn from that? And what can we implement in our school district to keep our students, our staff, our guests, and our community safe? Large event crisis training. We hosted a large event crisis training for not just our school district, but also area, school districts and area organizations. So once again, thinking about those large events that we have in our school district, how can we manage those and manage those safely? And then at the end of every meeting, we have an open roundtable where we go around and just talk about the topics that are pertinent to us. All right.
So some of the prevention and mitigation strategies that we have in our schools. So we have school resource officers in all of our secondary schools. So every element, or so every middle school and every high school has a LSPD officer stationed there. We also have impact officers that are in our elementary schools on a regular basis. That is a community-focused officers' teaching courses that focus on teaching kids how to deal with peer pressure and stressful situations. Athletic event coverage, we have PD at a lot of our athletic events. We have EMS that provide coverage, especially at our football games and some other high-impact athletic events. And then we do pre-year site inspections. Fire inspects every one of our buildings for codes, and we collaborate in anything, any corrective actions that we need at that time. And then we've done some training initiatives. So over the last couple of years, we've worked with our local agencies to provide some comprehensive emergency preparedness training and exercises. And that includes, like you see in fall 2022, we did a bleacher collapse response where one of our great officers, Captain Mike Murray, came in and did a exercise with Dan Manley from the Fire Department on what if we had a bleacher collapse during a football game at Lee Summit West? How would we respond as a, as a district? How would we respond as a city? And how we coordinate that effort? 2023, we did a reunification rehearsal at Bernard Campbell Middle School. Not only did we do that as we set up a reunification, and we had our administration and some of our people do acting as they were responding to the incident as a parent or as a student or as a spouse. But we also had a information sharing going on the library with Red Cross and Homeland Security and FBI and city folks and district folks, and what does that look like from, from, in an emergency as such as that? I will tell you, we learned a lot from doing that. We learned on what worked well and what didn't work well, and we made some adjustments to our plans. Ongoing specialized training, we do cybersecurity training with TSA or with CISA, Homeland Security Information, Security Administration. Transportation safety, we've done TSA exercises on what if we found a bomb on a bus or suspicious package, and how do we respond to that? And how do we communicate? As well as active shooter responses, LSPD has used our buildings during the summers for trainings for all their officers, like how do they respond, simulated, like, hey, there's a shooter in here. How would they respond as if they were just driving up on the building in an event like that? And how do they enter? And how do they neutralize that threat? And then coming up in February of '26, we are looking at doing another exercise, a multi-agency exercise of a large-scale coordinated training event between LSPD, LSR seven, and Lee Summit Fire.
And when we do those trainings, that gives us an opportunity, the school district, to stand up our emergency operations team, our command unit, our logistics, our operations, our finance and administration, our planning and intelligence, those units underneath the command unit come together, and we work it. And in the room at the time, our fire and police, and we coordinate what that effort looks, looks like. And for us, that's, that's an event that might stand up 40 to 50 people in that planning process.
So like it's already been mentioned about the amount of training that we do with our school district and with our buildings. It's imperative that we, as the Lee Summit Police Department, get inside these buildings, whether that be through the school district or any other business, just to see how the layout is and be able to do some predictive measures. With the R seven, some of the stuff that we've been able to utilize this past year, we were able to get inside Lee Summit High School when they were doing some of the reconstruction. Every school has seen some type of manipulation or redesign. We've taken that opportunity to get inside those buildings after the redesign and be able to do training so that if we see a threat, we can mitigate it as best as possible. We get our, not just our school resource officers, there are our boots on the ground every day. But we also utilize getting our patrol officers, who are going to be the first ones to respond, to be able to handle an event. We were so fortunate whenever we had a swatting incident not, not long ago at Lee Summit High School, that officers were familiar with the facility. They were familiar whenever information was put out about where they had students at. This was after, after a school event. But we were able to collaborate with the school district, with our patrol officers, and mitigate what we perceived as a threat at the time. So that's what we're utilizing their buildings and the collaboration with the school district.
So a swatting incident, it's going across the country, not just in schools, but in so many different instances, where they have the opportunity to make a phone call, make a threat, and expect a large scale. So the incident, whether it be like an active shooter, somebody saying that they're going to make a, make an incident occur, whether it be a bomb threat, whether it be a shooting threat, or whatever the case is, that's what a swat-
threat, or whatever the case is, that's what a swatting incident would be. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just to walk through a couple of the collaboration efforts that we have together with the Fire Department and the school district. One, as previously mentioned, annually, we walk every facility within Lee Summit School District to make sure that it meets the current fire codes. We currently use IFC 2018 and NFPA standards. So every year before students get in there, we make sure that the, all the facilities are prepared and safe for students and, and staff coming in. And that's a constant dialogue throughout the year. I know we're constantly talking back and forth just to make sure that, that we're as safe as possible inside the schools themselves. Also, we have our crews going in, doing the same thing that PD does, just to familiar, familiarize themselves with the schools. So if they need to go in and do something, they're, they're able to get around pretty, pretty easily. We do joint training with police as well. So if there is some kind of large incident, obviously, we're all on the same page with the school districts and ourselves to make sure we're mitigating whatever threat that could possibly be. And then preparedness training. So one big point of that is the regional hazard mitigation plan that this council approved just recently. The school district had a lot of input into that when we, when we put that together with Mid-America Regional Council. So we were big partners on making sure as a city that we had a good plan put forth with our, with our hazard mitigation. And I think I have one more question. Yep, I'm sorry. And so just a couple of the last things real quickly. We've worked together with Summit Technology, and now we have a firefighter academy through them. So we work with the school district. Those students come out to our training center, and then we help provide instruction and, and our training materials to help them prepare and get certifications to have a future as a firefighter within the area. And then the last thing is we're working on getting our public education back up. And so with intent, we're going to be working with both, both first and fourth graders to kind of just walk through firefighter safety and, and safety at home. So that's the biggest kind of efforts that we're doing right now.
Thank you. But one of the, one of the biggest thing that has come out of this relationship that we've been talking about is the fact I can pick up the phone and call Captain Dug, Captain Hicks, I can call Chief Forbes, I've got phone numbers. And when things happen, people call, we just communicate, and we know each other. We have a face with a name. And if you know anything about emergency or crisis, that's not the time to start building a relationship. The time to build that relationship is well before. Not only communication, but have a plan and know how it's going to work and practice that plan. And this team, this team, not just the, the folks that are standing here, but the, the team I mentioned and the team that's not even listed in this presentation, it's large, and they care deeply about the safety and security of our students, our staff, and our guests, and about the entire community. And I know that's important to this board, and I know it's important to this council. And Mayor, I've heard you speak about safety and security being one of your number one priorities when you first became mayor. And so it is a priority that we are carrying out in the work that we're doing in this partnership. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, we, we may have a couple of questions for you. First, I'll just say, so when you're the mayor, you do get information pretty quickly when there's an incident, and I appreciate that communication, but also just the speed that right after that happens with which you all do respond is just remarkable. You've done a phenomenal job, and I don't get to ever say that in public or really in any setting, but this is the appropriate time just to say, I'm, I'm amazed at how quickly and how effectively you guys, and seriously, you take every single swatting incident or whatever. So thank you for that. I do have one question, which is you've done some pretty sizable no-tax increase bonds, just like the city has, to address public safety. And I was on the school board 10 years ago, and I remember like there were just spots that we just didn't have money, you know, at that time to address the environmental type of things, you know? Like I know, for, for example, Lee Summit High School, you've, you've just really tackled the safety issues of, you know, the, the exposure that that school has. How do, how do you feel you guys are doing now at this point?
First of all, you can never do enough. I'm going to say that right now because I just talked to the Barrows County Superintendent from Georgia. They responded from, that incident was the first shot to kid was in cuffs, and yet they still lost four lives, 68 seconds. That's all it was. First shot to the kid is in cuffs, but still four lives. So you can never do enough. But I also will say, there's no safer place that you're going to ever take your kid because there is no place you can take him that has more measures for safety. You can enter this building, you can enter that building across the street where you guys work, you can enter the Target movie theater, and you don't have to get buzzed in. We have more safety measures than anyone else, but it's never enough. But in 2020 bond, we spent $6 million of that bond on safety measures, and we're spending another $6 million from this 2025 bond on safety measures. We don't advertise what we do with those because we don't want people to game plan how to get past our measures. But these guys all know, and they're also help coordinate and to help us decide and make those decisions about, all right, what are you, what are you lacking? What could help be beneficial and move forward? So it is definitely a huge focus of ours, keep kids, as Steve likes to say, safe, warm and dry. And, and because that's when learning can happen, if they're safe, warm and dry.
Another step that we take in our, as Dr. Buck has mentioned, but in addition to that, you know, crime prevention through environmental design. You know, your design team can play a lot in how they design the building, how they design the landscaping, how they design the site to help with safety and security as well. And we take that into account as well.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. How about I open it up to the council and board? Questions or comments? Yes, is there a? Yeah, help me out. Thanks, Dr. Sheldon.
Thank you, Dr. Sheldon. I just have a quick question. When, when you do the large multi-agency exercises, do the neighboring LSR-7 communities sit in on those, such as the communities you mentioned, Lake Ladawanna, Blue Springs, Cass County, that sort of thing?
They are always invited, and they, they will occasionally attend. Their forces are much smaller, so when they have, they don't have the resources that, that Lee Summit Fire and Police do. So it's more difficult for them to get away to attend, but we always invite them, and occasionally they will attend.
Also, we have, so Summit points in Kansas City. Our Fire Department goes to that, even though it's not in, you know, same with Hazel Grove, it's a unity village, they have an agreement and they help each other out. So Lake Ladawanna has their own forces, so does Greenwood, but if you think of those two buildings, they're in unique situations for us and Lee Summit. Both fire and police respond to those.
I think I'd like to follow up on that, too. Years ago, we did the, what did we do at the Campbell, was it Campbell Middle School where we all met as a city in '23? Was that recent? No, it wasn't. Oh, man. Okay. Well, what, what I would like to say is when you include the board and the, and the council, even though your operations and you, you're, you do all the work, what it does, though, is us just being able to participate when we can helps us be able to, to understand the importance of what we're doing up here and, and helps us advocate within the community for what we need to, to keep the kids safe and keep, you know, everyone and our citizens safe as well, you know, employees and more. So just keep that in mind when you, when you have those, having an opportunity for us to come and observe, but also to all of us, if you can make it, it's, it's, it's motivating. It's motivating as an elected official. So appreciate you providing those opportunities to us. All right. Any other comments before we keep going? Yes.
Going to kind of put Captain Dug on the spot right now. Could you give us a five-minute rundown on the, the great operations that you and we have? Chris Madden here, who's the Board President of the Youth Court that collaborates with the school. Such an amazing deal that you guys have going on. I don't know if a lot of the group knows about Youth Court, but you get a little five-minute spiel on that?
I'll do my best. So I'll hit on several things, since Chris Madden is here. If you want to stand up, come on in. But Chris Madden works with the Lee Summit Police Department through several different avenues, through Lee Summit Cares. And some of the things that we do with Lee Summit Cares involves the, the student population of Lee Summit School District. So we have PPRB, which is Partners to Prevent Risky Behaviors, where we utilize a lot of statistical data to be able to, to discuss things that are going on both within the school and within the city, and again, dealing with the youth. Take that a step further, and we're also involved, as, as mentioned, that we have Youth Court. Our Youth Court is a, just that, it's a court that is set up and ran by the youth of the, of the community. We have students from LSR-7, from Summit Christian Academy, that are all part of the Youth Court design. They are prosecutors, they're our defense attorneys, they are our judges, our bailiffs, and it's ran, students that are eligible to be a part of that, if they're involved in an incident that happens at school, they are a first-time offender, they're eligible for Youth Court, they can come in, they will be quote-unquote judged by their peers, prosecuted by their peers, defended by their peers. And then this goes in accordance with any discipline that they would get with the school district. They can receive community service, different programs, so, and if you want more about that, I'll pass that off to Chris.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this opportunity. Well, the biggest thing that we want to know is for the community to know is that this is a way to prevent students to go down to family court and the juvenile system. And I think that's the biggest deal, that Lee Summit is, has the only youth court program in the nation where they're actually tried by their peers and through that community service is a deterrent to keep our students from going down to the juvenile and the family court system. So it is a way to prevent students, and although they might make a mistake, it's a way to keep them from going down a road where their mistakes will impact their lives down the road. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you all so much. We appreciate all you do for us. Well, we've got more presentations. If you look at the agenda, items B through I, I think, are going to be different tables in, in the room. And we are going to break up with regard to in groups of three or four. I lined, I told them where they were going to be before we started the meeting, but member Haley, you weren't sitting there at, at that very moment, so you're going to be with these, these lovely ladies right over here, straight across, yeah. So you'll go with them when we go. So there's going to be four different groups, and there are eight tables. So to the, the public that's, that are here, a couple of things. One, there's going to be four free tables where there's going to be either city staff or school board staff. You're welcome to go to those tables and interact, just ask questions regarding the topic. Here are the topics. We're going to have a table on the city of Lee Summit. It's called a breakout session on housing discussion and initiatives. So you're going to talk to our development team, Development Services, Tracy Albers, Amy Nassif, Shannon McGuire, with our Planning and Development Department. There will be a table that is called Property Reserve, PR, that's the, or Land Reserve is what they've gone by before as well. That's the church land that we always talk about, the thousands and thousands of acres. So we're going to have a status update on that, and that's going to come from Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager, and David Buschak, the, our Economic Development Attorney. And then we're going to have one on capital projects from the city. That'll be Public Works Department, Michael Park, the Director, George Binger, and Mike Anderson. So that you're going to be talking about roads and possible buildings and, and more, but definitely roads. And then we'll have one on solid waste, stormwater. That's been a big topic for the council, and we're trying to figure out how to make sure that people's homes aren't flooding every, you know, when there are big rains, and those big rains keep coming more and more frequently than they're supposed to. And then we have some school, the school LSR-7 breakout tables. One is the Bond Project Update, which you mentioned, some of it, but you guys have been really expanding and, and upgrading facilities. So that will be, you just have LSR-7 staff. So I know most of them, but they're not listed on my list here to, to name. You'll have a table for the LSR-7 on transportation, a table on the April 2026 ballot issue, Prop C, so that'll be coming this coming April. So if you want to learn about that, that's going to be at one of the tables. And then finally, it's called Profile of a Graduate. You want to explain that one?
We, as a district, and many districts, have a profile of a graduate. Ours is kind of dated, so Shannon Booth, our Director of Career Technical Education, is going to have a year-long process. She's already started to redefine the project of a graduate and what we want to see every kid graduate with, what kind of skills. And so she is excited to get your input, and she's going to be sad she doesn't have more time with you.
Well, they're all going to be sad about that part because you get five minutes to present to our staffs, and then five minutes for discussions. So you're going to, we will be at 10 minutes at each table, and what we'll do is we'll rotate clockwise, okay? And we'll start over here. So each of us, each of our groups, one, two, three, four, we will start at the tables on the left, and each of us go to it, and then we'll just rotate around the room in a clockwise fashion. So that's what we'll do. And Dr. Buck is the bad guy with the buzzer. He will be keeping track and keeping us on task. So ask those questions quickly, the ones that you want the answers to, and we will break out at this time. break out at this time.
Ever wondered how the city budget works? The total 2026 budget is over $380 million, which includes funding for daily operations, capital improvements, debt service, internal service, and enterprise operations. For example, the general fund is the foundation for the city's day-to-day services and investments like road maintenance, public safety, and fire protection. The general fund is supported by property taxes, sales taxes generated by local businesses, franchise taxes, and other sources like licenses, permits, and fees. For every dollar citizens pay in property tax, the city receives 18 cents. This means the city receives $845 a year in property taxes for a median single-family house. These taxes provide public safety, park maintenance, infrastructure, and the best services to keep Lee Summit going and improving. One of the community's top priorities is infrastructure investment, which is reflected in the capital improvement plan. $113 million of the 2026 budget is invested into the capital improvement plan. The 2026 capital improvement budget includes investments like the 291 and 50 highway interchange, Third Street, Warden-Purcell's intersection, and Prior Road. The budget process includes guidance from the city council, citizen input, and critical success factors from the city's Ignite strategic plan. To learn more about the city's budget, visit citiOfLS.net/budget.
Halfway point. So if you have time to move to discussion or Q and A, halfway point.
Halfway point. You're at the halfway point. So if you haven't moved to Q and A or discussion, please think about doing so.
I'm starting your time.
I'm starting your time. Halfway warning, half your time is up. Halfway warning, half your time is up.
Forty-second warning, forty-second warning before we rotate. All right, thank your partner and rotate to your fifth table, rotate to your fifth table. All right, you should be at your fifth table by now and I'm gonna start the clock for your fifth table. Here at the halfway point of this round, halfway point. Sixty-second warning, sixty-second warning. Time is up, time to rotate to your sixth station, to your sixth station. Time to rotate to table number six. Five down, three to go. All right, I'm starting the clock for table number six.
...
You're at the halfway point, halfway point. Halfway point for table number seven, halfway point. 30-second warning, 30 seconds. Time to switch to your last group. So if you see some presenters you haven't seen before, head to that table. Move to your last table. Alright, starting the time for your last table now. Halfway through this last table, halfway through this last table. Sixty second warning, sixty seconds. All right, everybody, thank you. If we can have the city council and school board members come back up front, we'll wrap up the meeting. So city council members and school board members just head up back up front so we can wrap up.
Ever wondered how the city budget works? The total 2026 budget is over $380 million, which includes funding for daily operations, capital improvements, debt service, internal service, and enterprise operations. For example, the general fund is the foundation for the city's day-to-day services and investments like road maintenance, public safety, and fire protection. The general fund is supported by property taxes, sales taxes generated by local businesses, franchise taxes, and other sources like licenses, permits, and fees. For every dollar citizens pay in property tax, the city receives 18 cents. This means the city receives $845 a year in property taxes for a median single-family house. These taxes provide public safety, park maintenance, infrastructure, and the best services to keep Lee Summit going and improving. One of the community's top priorities is infrastructure investment, which is reflected in the capital improvement plan. $113 million of the 2026 budget is invested into the capital improvement plan. The 2026 capital improvement budget includes investments like the 291 and 50 highway interchange, Third Street, Warden-Purcell's intersection, and Prior Road. The budget process includes guidance from the city council, citizen input, and critical success factors from the city's Ignite strategic plan. To learn more about the city's budget, visit citiofls.net/budget.
When the person called on the phone, she said that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. When they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner. I'm the manager of Lee Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here. You guys have some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here.
Right, this means a lot. You know, I think one thing we notice when we go through something like this, we realize just how great each other's staffs are, and the administrations, you know, the department heads and more. And then you start thinking about, there's a lot of history here. Many of us know much of the history of Lee Summit, so we're getting to talk about a lot of successes the last, you know, 10 years. So very proud of that on the school district side and the city side. But I think hopefully we all see that we do similar type of work as board members and council members. We have similar roles, similar jobs, but we're only successful because we're hiring talent and we're keeping talent in our schools and our cities. So thank you for the great presentations. Again, I want to say to you all that we need to keep these doors open, the relationships. I always talk about culture. I'm always talking about culture, 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 and team, team, team. And, you know, I consider the council a team because we're always trying to find a consensus and make decisions together, whether we agree or not. And so I think we're a team though, as far as Lee Summit... I think we're a team when it comes to the school district and the city and the school board and the city council. We should be making decisions with each other in mind and trying to lift each other up. So I do appreciate it. I would like to open it up for any comments about tonight or anything you want to add to this conversation. Yeah. Mayor P. Tim Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. I won't repeat what you've already said, but I want to thank you guys, our colleagues from the school district. Like the mayor said earlier, this is the seventh year we've done this. And Dr. Buck, thank you for changing the format. We've come a long ways. It's staff both for the school district and city did a great job. You guys always do a great job presenting, but I think it's just more user-friendly and more effective by sitting down around the tables and just having a conversation. So I appreciate the format. I learned what Prop C is. So we'll help you guys advocate for that. So thank you, guys. Great evening. Thank you.
I had a great partner to team up with tonight, board president Stacy Myers.
Just to reiterate, thank you very much for the opportunity to collaborate and learn from each other. And, I mean, Lee Summit is a small, big town, right? We're all in this together. So thank you very much. And I think we're probably about ready to call it a night. Thank you.
I was just telling Dr. Buck and Dr. Bargert, this is my favorite, it's my favorite meeting of the year. I just want you to know, every single year, I love this. And so I learn so much. It's such a great opportunity to meet new people and connect with the council. And so this has really become my favorite meeting of the year. So thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:32.